Jay Gonzalez, absent with notice. Butler, absent with notice. W Gonzalez?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Jimenez. I'm the person of the Berwin South School District 100. To my left is Dr. Mary Havis, and she's going to give us the, oh, rock call for, thank you.
Here, or present, I guess. Jimenez?
Here.
Steinfeld here. W Gonzalez?
Here.
Jarenth?
Here.
Palace?
Here.
Yes, and Dr. Havis will give us the superintendent's report.
All right. Well, first off, I want to welcome Michael Spiezek and Ernesto Zamudio. They're doing their first meeting together tonight, so welcome. All right, and we are going to kick off the superintendent's report with a pretty lengthy presentation. Hopefully, you guys had a little time to review it before tonight. That is going to outline our district improvement and local data review. It kind of helps to set the stage of what we're looking at now and where we're going for this upcoming school year. So I am going to invite our teaching and learning team to join me over at the podium, and we'll get started. Thank you. All right, so just as we kick off our district improvement, we really spent some time looking at our data. And then really that helps drive our district improvement and our school improvement for the upcoming school year. So the district improvement process really begins with us making sure that we are reminding ourselves of the Board of Education goals and what goals the board has set for us as a district, as well as revisiting our belief statements, making sure that we are providing that rigorous personalized learning opportunities, that we are striving for academic excellence, making sure our students are set up for success, keeping that innovation in mind, collaboration, creativity, exploration, ensuring that our classrooms are student-centered, supportive, safe, and that we are responsive to the social-emotional needs of our students. We really want to make sure that we are using our data, right? Today, we're talking about local data, which is so important to the decision-making process on a regular basis, whereas our state data is kind of that yearly data. But what we need to make sure that we're doing is that we are looking at data and adjusting throughout the school year, not waiting until our IAR tests come once a year. So that's why that local data is so important to us, as well as continuing to engage family and community partnerships, creating this environment where we are always continuously learning from each other. If people are seeing successes in a particular area, or there's a classroom that's growing at a faster rate, what can we learn from what's happening in that classroom so that we can do that across the district? So that data is important for us to be monitoring. And then obviously continuing to provide those extracurricular opportunities that enhance the overall experiences of our students in our classroom. Each year, we also review our evidence-based funding, making sure that we are prioritizing the resources that we have and putting them in the right places. So we are really doing a great job with that. We have, we are where we need to be in many of these areas. We're going to be slightly closer in that intervention area. We were at least at this point able to get an additional .5 reading intervention at East Middle School. Our goal was to get one at each. We're still working for that, but right now, we've at least have .5 additional at each middle school. And that's really helping us kind of get to that level where we need to be overall for intervention. So this local data, again, really helps us look at one piece of our current reality. Yes, our Illinois Report Card data, our IAR data, all that yearly data that we are spending time right now putting into our systems and looking at, that's really important to us when we're looking at the overall picture. But we also need to look at what's happening in our individual classrooms, schools, and that helps us drive our decisions across the district. So as you know, we are really working on that District 100 being that a path to a high-performing district. And we know that that takes growth, little bit of growth each year, continuing to look at where are we seeing that growth? How do we keep that moving? And that's going to help us get to that level if we're continuing to adjust as we learn more about what is working and what's successful. We talk about how we really want to make sure that we are transforming those learning experiences for our students. So if that means looking at something differently, right, which we spent a whole year going through a process of looking at reading instruction differently and learning. So that takes a changing in a mindset, but can lead to that improved performance and really an understanding of how do we deliver that instruction to better reach our students. And it begins, which we all really strive for, is that belief from all of us that together as an organization, from the Board of Education to every person that works within our district, believing that our kids can, continuing to raise that rigor level. Our students can, our staff can. And we are excited to really explore this data to help us drive all of the goals for success in the upcoming school year. So we're going to spend some time talking through our district improvement process, as well as some of our local data that we're looking at now that really helps us see our current reality and helps to move us forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Bea first.
All right. Thank you very much. As Mary mentioned, there are a couple of beliefs that we really focus on when we're looking at our local data. The first is utilizing several measures to really look at a student comprehensively, not just looking at one item, but really looking at every single piece of data that we might have on that student and groups of students. We also believe in making sure that our students have rigorized and personalized learning opportunities. We have been steadily working towards that coming up next year, even with our literacy adoption. But we have been working towards that, you know, all along, and we're very proud of where we are moving towards. So you've probably seen some tree diagrams during the various school improvement meetings that you've seen with the teachers, sorry, with the principals, and then subsequently our teachers, and then some of our classrooms are starting to build these. We always start with a broad goal, looking at what is the big thing that we're trying to focus on. And there are really two things in our district that we focus on that are very broad. The first is literacy, and we are looking at a results goal, which would be the next component, and looking at 45% of our students will meet or exceed literacy standards on IAR. Then we look at our indicators. What are the two components that we're going to be looking at, two or multiple components that we'd be looking at? In this case, two, in terms of how are we going to improve that literacy? And so it's word recognition and it's language comprehension, the focus for next year. And then how are we going to measure that? And today, you'll hear about a lot of the different ways that we've been measuring that with all of our tools and all of our assessments, whether they be NWEA, FastBridge, and so forth. In math, similarly, we look at our broad goal, which is math, looking to increase that to 40% as our results goal. Our indicators are the priority standards, and really looking at what are some of those math priority standards that we are trying to focus on. And then the measure, certainly NWEA and a variety of other measures, but also looking at, you know, some of the standards, right? Numbers and operations, operations and algebraic thinking, number systems and expressions, and so forth. So just to recap, 45% of students will meet or exceed standards in IAR and language arts and 40% in math. And we are steadily working towards that. Again, we look at the whole child. We don't just look at only academics. We are looking at social, emotional, and how the child is. Certainly, you want to make sure that you are here, ready to learn, and looking at a lot of those components, looking at behavior, attendance, things of that sort. So we're not just going to share some data only on academics. We're also going to share some of the other components that we look at. So we start with attendance. Attendance, pre, you know, pandemic, we were in 2019. Our attendance was steady at 95.2. Post, it's still at 92.4. So we've actually been pretty steady with slight growth, maybe a tenth of a percent growth there. But our goal really is at 97%. We are wanting to get our kids in schools. If they're in school, they're learning, right? And we're looking at a variety of things, right? PBIS, our social workers, and working on attendance incentives, looking at parent outreach, and our principals are doing a lot of that along with our social workers, looking at a variety of rewards, celebrations, highlighting those positive. Today, you know, 92% of students are here and ready to learn, things like that, right? Making sure that we're recognizing our students. And so with that, we continue with PBIS.
Yeah, so just as we mentioned, that social-emotional component when it comes to looking at data, with the PBIS program model that we have here in D100, our coaches do meet once a month to come together and look at data, analyze what is it that as a school we're going to focus on? So as Bea mentioned, that attendance. Attendance was a big focus for last year. What can we do to provide incentives for students? But not only that, what can we do to ensure students are here? So if they're not here, how are social workers reaching out to families? Again, those social-emotional components to getting our students here. Is there a reason for that? How can we help? But our data shows that we are where we should be, right? So more than 80% of our students are meeting the expectations. So when we look at this graph, we have 80% or more students receiving zero to one incidence, right, throughout the year. And then the same thing for the 11.5. That shows that we have anywhere from two to five incident reports. And then our last one is six-plus incidents. So when we're looking at this, we could holistically say there was a decrease in suspensions overall from the year prior to this year. So 42% decrease, that's huge. A decrease in bullying and fighting across the district, so we're very happy about that. So when the coaches do come together to discuss what are things that they could do, what are things that they could look at, they discuss with one another. They empower one another to really think about what's working in one school that maybe another coach can try in their school. So we're committed, as a D100 family and district, to universal expectations and supports for our students. And as we're going to move along to more of that academic portion of things, the behavior portion of things and that social-emotional support is extremely important, too. So, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to share the preschool data. So this was the year that preschool met the 2020 babies. And true confession, I was very nervous to start the year. So there's some initial studies out there that say that children that were born in 2020 or in utero in 2020 are showing delays kind of across the board. Language, it's not just a social-emotional cognitive delays. In the spring of 2023, as we were screening kids coming in out of early intervention, I was seeing that. And I literally was dragging back to the office every Wednesday, and dragging isn't something I normally do. And so this is something my team started to discuss last spring, like, okay, this is what we're potentially looking at. How are we going to address this? Let's jump in full force. And so I probably held my breath all year till I saw our spring data. And it just goes to prove that the benefit of high-quality preschool, because we still showed gains over the year. So I have hope for those children that were born in 2020, if we get them in. We can still close those gaps that maybe did occur because of things that happened during that time period. So the first slide here, I have our preschool goal data, and our goal data is our observational data that we collect in preschool. So observational data is just that. It's collected in a natural environment. So it can be pictures that teachers take. It can be videos. It can be notes that they jot down, like, is children are playing, is they're in small groups? And then they take that data and they tie it to one of the domains, and within each domain, they tie it to the standard. And then within the standard, they rate the child based on their development. So there's like a color-coded system, a number system, and then you mark where they are. And so this is our collective data of the three to five-year-olds in all of our preschool programs. It's really not where they started. Bea said, is this where they all started? And I was like, yes, but no. Fall data is the end of November, so this is where they were at the end of November. And the one that stood out to us the most when we looked at like what we had coming in was the math line. So we had the highest number of like below average in math, so we really did a focus on math within preschool this year. And then it was effective. So you see, we started at 46% of the kids were meeting standards in math, and by the end of the year, 62% were. So that focus paid off. And our data, I don't have the comparison of spring, which I apologize, I should have from the previous year. But our math data was higher because last spring, we were at 54% meeting it. So this is just where we ended the year. And again, I have hopes for the children of 2020, and we'll continue to be meeting them this year, and then the following year, they'll go to kindergarten. So, all right, that's where we are in preschool.
All right. So moving on to our local assessments, we give the FastBridge assessment to our kindergarten students and our first-grade students now as their local assessment. Second grade through eighth grade takes the NWEA MAPS test, and our K1 takes FastBridge. We started FastBridge, not this school year, but the previous. So we now have two years of data in FastBridge for our kindergarteners, and we have one year of data in FastBridge for our first graders, as we've moved the assessment up with the last year's kindergarteners to this year's kindergarteners. So you can see our early math data for kindergarten from last spring and to this spring. And as you can see, the majority of our students are in the low-risk or some-risk category, not a huge difference. Again, that's different groups of students. But this assessment is measuring those developing math skills. It's administered one-to-one with our kindergarten students, so they're not taking like a paper and pencil test. This is very much more observational or conversational with students. It is valid, reliable, and norm-referenced, and the categories of low risk, some risk, and high risk help us predict how students will be doing eventually. And so this is a little bit different way to look at data than when we look at math data, which is percentiles and, you know, where they fall. This really helps us see, based on how the kids are doing now, how are we predicting? And again, we can individualize that instruction and provide that personalized learning to those students who aren't where they need to be. And the students take this three times a year. So they take it in the fall, and the winter, and the spring. So after each administration, we're able to take that information and work with that very specifically. The FastBridge assessments really give us a lot more detailed information on what kids can and can't do, much more than the MAPS tests did that they used to take several years ago. So the FastBridge data has really been helpful in us really pinpointing what it is that our kids need. FastBridge Early Literacy in Kindergarten, again, this is the second year that our kindergartners have taken this assessment. So you can see the data from last spring to this spring in both English and in Spanish. And the nice part about FastBridge is that we now have a parallel assessment, which allows us to see our dual-language students holistically in that biliteracy lens. Because we know students are coming into our dual-language program. Some are dominant in one language over another, some have a mix of both. And this assessment really helps teachers see where we need to support those students. And that alongside the progression with our curriculum, right? Students who come in from a Spanish-speaking household, we're not very concerned that they're in high risk in English. Well, they have been exposed to that. But when they're showing that they have that potential in Spanish, well, then we're just going to be bridging as they move up in the grade levels. So it really helps us see how students are doing through that biliteracy lens and is helping us develop a biliteracy trajectory that's going to help us understand how we can predict how students are going to do and how we can best support our students as they move through our dual-language program. Now, FastBridge Early Math for First Grade, this is the first year that we gave that early math to our first-grade students. And you can see, in the fall, our first-grade students came in at 58-ish, 59% low risk, which is about what they left kindergarten in last year. And now, at the end of this year in the spring, they're living at 67.4%. So our kids are making great progress in first grade in math based upon our FastBridge data. And it's great to see that because our Bridges resource that we've been implementing several years is really, really helping us to close those gaps and to catch those students up. And the data that we get from FastBridge really helps us target that. Again, the same thing in literacy. This is the first year that we have FastBridge Early Literacy data in first grade. Again, we'll have it going forward. But you can see the fall-to-spring data in early reading English and the fall-spring data from early reading Spanish. And so, again, we only have that one year of data, but we're going to be continuing to integrate our structured phonics and systematic literacy instruction with the adoption of our new literacy resource. We've seen growth in that since we've started that, and we're looking forward to what that's going to mean as we progress through with our new literacy curriculum. NWEA, this is our MAP data for math, NWEA, and again, our second through eighth graders take this. We have had a strong instructional resource with Bridges and Indesmos for several years now. And as you can see, from '21, '22, '23, '24, we are progressively making big gains in our math instruction. And so it's really exciting to see that that commitment to a strong instructional resource is really making a difference. Our math and instructional coaches have played a huge part in that, as well as our math support teachers, in using this information when the students take the assessments in the fall and the spring to really target instruction and interventions for those students who need it the most. This year, we did realign the elementary scope and sequence based on some of the results from NWEA and IAR last year to better fit the needs of our students, and we've really seen that that's made a difference.
So NWEA for literacy for second through eighth grade has remained a bit consistent over the past three years. However, as...
Sorry, I just have, what does NWEA stand for? Sorry, I'm sorry.
North, I'm going to say it wrong, Northwest Education Association, it's MAP, it's just the organization that owns the MAP test.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. Sorry. And then I had a quick question. All good. I had a question as well.
Yep.
I'm sorry, and this might be for Lindsay, but when you're talking about showing those composites for literacy with the Spanish and English, are you saying that there's a parallel assessment that allows you to view them both? So are the dual kids taking both?
Yes, the dual kids are taking both.
And the kids who are not dual are just taking?
English, yes.
So this is a composite of all the kids, and then just the Spanish should be, those kids take Spanish and English, correct?
Yes. So we can break the data down and look at the data based upon our dual-language learners in English and our monolingual learners in English, and this is just the picture of all of them together.
Sure.
But when you look at a student's scores in Spanish and English, like an individual student, to see where they are, right? It helps the teacher know, right, if they're low in both, right, we have some literacy concerns. If they have a strength in one, we just need to bridge them with the other one, right, to continue to develop. So it really helps us know what to do.
Thank you.
And my question is about the math test. Is that in Spanish for the dual-language students?
The dual-language, right now, the FastBridge math assessment is only available in English, so they do take that in English. And so we take that information with that in mind when we think about how we support our math students. Very often, again, it's a, it's a, it's a one-on-one assessment, and so there's a lot there. Like oftentimes, the teacher will ask the question in English, and the student will answer in Spanish, and that's completely fine.
So am I correct to assume that math, the math lessons are in English?
It's in kindergarten and in first grade.
It's in Spanish. They have a number quarter and a portion of the math program that is taught in English in the undergrade.
So they are being taught in English but assessed?
They're deeply taught in Spanish.
And English. So it's a, because of our program model, 80, 20, and so forth going up, they do have math in both languages. The majority will be in Spanish, and they do have a portion in English. And they're always, you know, the whole bridge and all of those components, so to look at that comprehensively.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Map for literacy, as you can see, over the time, it has remained consistent, which is why we have been working to adopt our new literacy curriculum for this upcoming school year. However, the students who have been receiving intervention have been demonstrating a faster growth rate. We have also adopted an intervention program specific for students with special needs. In literacy, we have adopted the Sundays Intervention Program this past year. So we are working on that with our students who have IEPs to also help work on their growth in literacy. So this chart breaks down the MAP subgroups. So again, this is for students who are in grades second through eighth, breaking it down by math and reading. breaking it down by math and reading, as you can see, as the whole district. For math, there's students who made a fifty percent growth percentile with sixty-one point seven percent. Special education students had a forty-nine percent, fifty percent growth percentile. EL students were at almost fifty-seven percent. And dual students were above the district average at almost sixty-three percent. For reading, the whole district was just below forty-two percent. Special education students, as you can see, were struggling with that twenty-eight point two-five percent. EL students were at thirty-seven point eight percent. And then the dual language, as you can see, is separated out there. Again, showing that need for a strong ELA curriculum, especially for our special education students and EL students.
And just to explain, above the fiftieth growth percentile, students who are above the fiftieth growth percentile, that means they're making more than a year's worth of growth in that grade level. So any student who scores above the fiftieth percentile in the growth percentile means that they're catching up to where they need to be. Whereas anybody below the fiftieth growth percentile is not making as many, a year's worth of gains, regardless of where they're starting.
Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about our AIMS program. So that's another subgroup that we have, that we've recently been reporting on for the State School Report Card. It's our accelerated and gifted students in our district. This is our third, we're going into our third school year with our Advanced Inquiry Mathematics and English Language Arts classes at our middle schools. So the report that we have here are how our students are performing achievement-wise in both ELA and math. So when we're looking at our students who are meeting or exceeding on MAP, we've consistently increased in each grade level. So you have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade data there. These cohorts of students have the same teacher for both sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I think there's something to be said about the consistency in instruction, expectations, differentiation, all of those pieces. So this is Freedom's ELA AIMS courses for ELA, and then this is our Heritage AIMS courses. So our students who are meeting or exceeding, we're showing anywhere from seventy to eighty percent of that cohort in every grade level, performing at or above where we'd like them to be. We're excited about the new ELA adoption, because there's options for additional differentiation for them. While their teachers are clearly doing an excellent job here, because of the rigorous resources that we were recently adopting, we're going to be able to even dive deeper with these students and meet their needs. And then here, you'll see our math achievement data. Again, consistency. You don't see a lot of students in the low average, or even in our average, there's just a few students that are there. But they're still performing at a really high level and challenging one another in their courses. So making considerable growth throughout the year. And then there's Heritage, so Freedom and Heritage AIMS. The other assessment that Lindsay and I help administer together in the district is our COGAT data. This also helps with programming placement at the elementary and middle school for our accelerated students. We recently shared with all of you how we have all of these academic measures. We are able to test students on their academic abilities when it comes to state standards and things like that. But we wanted to dive deeper into the abilities that our students have, especially for English language learners in our district who might not be performing where we want them to be academically yet, but they have this high potential for learning. Or even students who are in our co-taught classrooms or self-contained classrooms that we're looking forward to seeing their special and unique abilities. So this assessment really measures how students learn. So we give a screener for fifth, I'm going to talk about fifth grade first. Fifth grade, we give that screener in the late fall, early winter, and we test every fifth grader in the district. And we screen them, and then from that score, we give them the full battery if they score above a certain score on the assessment, above a certain STANIN. With that information, we use that in addition to any other academic assessments that we give, like MAP and their common assessment data and things like that, to help make placements for the middle school AIMS program. So we're starting to identify and look at various measures of how those students are performing to help continue to push students along in their academic progress. And the same with second grade. We don't have like a separate track necessarily for students at the elementary school, but we do support teachers in their classrooms with differentiation, and we have our after-school programming that begins in third grade. So we give it in the spring of second grade, because they don't have an assessment. They don't have IAR in the spring. It's kind of a lull for them. But we get the screening information so that in third grade, when we start the after-school academic enrichment programming for these friends, teachers are well-informed, and we can kind of hit the ground running from there. So that's just our screening. So that's how many students... So the first bar for that grade level shows you how many we screen, and then how many received the full battery. So it's kind of been pretty consistent over the last two years. And then this shows us how many students are scoring at a seven-plus STANIN on the full battery. That helps us identify students who are gifted, performing exceptionally high, who need additional differentiated education plans, but also those students who are, we're inviting them into either our elementary programming or our middle school programming. It's been nice to see just another measure, and teachers are like, oh, there are some friends on here that I'm learning more about their learning styles and how they learn. And it gives us a really good report to have conversations about how we can try different things with these groups of kids. So this report has been really helpful over the last couple of years to help differentiate. So we've really met with every grade level. Next year, we're going to be meeting with fourth and seventh grade, again, to talk about different ways to differentiate, especially now that we have two years' worth of data here with COGAT. Yes?
So what do the teachers then have at their disposal to meet those needs? If they're talking about, like, are we dipping into like sixth-grade math things? Or are we going to the third grade? Like, what's the...
Great question. So we try to, depending on the team and how many, so depending on how many students we're looking at within that grade level, we do try to get creative with, you know, pairing across team. Like maybe during that MTSS block, one teacher, if they're working on the one end of the diamond, where they have to do a lot of intervention for Tier Two students who might be challenged, who need a challenge, who are, I'm sorry, excuse me, who need specific intervention for, because they're struggling. The other teacher might take them and do some enrichment through our Bridges Quest and things like that at the elementary level. But also, that report talks about different grouping that you can do. It also, I'm trying to think what else we've added to that. We've also, depending on how high their STANIN score and their MAP scores are, we will write a specific plan for that child that outlines goals. MAP does a really nice job of showing us what standards they are ready for. So when we have a private one-on-one, we have a conversation with the teacher, usually the administrator, and I help facilitate the conversation of what does the student need. Sometimes we bring in an instructional coach and invite the parents in to have that conversation. So, and they get a specialized plan for them moving forward. And then that follows them to the following school year.
And is this like a newer initiative? Like the COGAT, and then filtering, and then...
So the COGAT is our new initiative. That was something that is new to us. This is only our second year of administering it. We were missing that piece, because we know that their students might not be performing at the ninety-eighth percentile on MAP, and that's academic measures. But they have a high ability to learn, and they can recognize patterns, and their vocabulary is really high. And so we want to be able to draw those pieces out when we're giving them instruction to...
No, and it's nice to have like a standardized methodological practice for determining which students, and not just having it based on, I don't know, teacher recommendations or whatever else.
Yeah, we have like kind of a matrix of several factors that we look at when we're trying to make up the classes to for the middle school. So it's not just a single factor. In that sense, we want to be able to give as many students as we can the opportunity to reach that potential. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, Lindsay and Sam are presenting at the Illinois Association of Gifted Educators this fall, specifically on how to identify students comprehensively, and not just looking at a child by one measure. And, oh, they're not, they're not making it. So we have done a very, very nice job here of really looking at children holistically, as we mentioned. So what we are up to in the coming year is we are going to continue our school improvement processes in that continuous, you know, methodology, embedding and continuing with our professional learning communities. Our big, big project is that implementation of the literacy resource, which we are very excited about. Our staff is excited about it. They're emailing us, asking us for the login so that they can get in. And, you know, they're excited. We're going to continue to identify resources for students in special education, specifically in the area of math, so that they can have additional support with that. Monitoring our implementation of resources for students in special education and literacy, since that is something that we just integrated last year. Continue to provide training for special education teachers on instruction. Sarah has done a very nice job working with some folks that are coming in, working with our teachers and the various groups that we have to support their needs. Monitoring our implementation of Bridges and Desmos, resources that we have had over the last several years, but really looking at, is this the resource that is really giving us our best bet of student achievement? We're going to continue providing professional development to staff on restorative practices, de-escalation. We have a couple of folks coming in at our institutes to do some of those components, in addition to having some in-house people who are trained by a specific organization to do that. Full implementation of our kindergarten experiential learning. We have our whole district now that will be engaged in that. So again, we'll be looking at the child from their developmental stage, but also not forgetting the other components, academics and so forth. Implementing our elementary science curriculum in a very structured, systematic way. You know, we've had an elementary science curriculum for some time, and it has been implemented. And so we're actually tightening that up just a little bit, pacing it out, getting people materials that they need, and all of those components so that our kids have what they need and our teachers have what they need to teach. We're evaluating and we're researching best practices in the middle school master schedule to see, are we really maximizing that time for instruction, you know, with the eighty-eight-minute blocks? How can we integrate some type of intervention block in there in some way, shape, or form? So they are just starting that process, and, you know, something that they'll look at and implement the following fall. Any other questions that you may have?
I have a question. Just going back to the chart that had the growth and the percentages based on the amount of growth that they're making. Thank you. Yes, that chart. So my question is, obviously, if students are performing at a very high level, they wouldn't be able to grow. Is there a way to differentiate that from students who are at a lower level and are not making growth? And is this taking that into account?
So actually, it does take it into account, because the MAP test is not a test where there's necessarily an endpoint. And so students, although they are already performing well, there's no limit to how far they can go.
I was maybe thinking of the IAR, which has the limit. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than that. And so one of the things that we often discuss is, right, our AIMS students, they're already performing really high. But if you actually compare the AIMS growth to students in general education, many of our AIMS students are actually growing at a faster pace, even though they're already up here. And so it doesn't matter regardless, because there's no limit to how far you can go.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one last question. I think Jeanette was doing the PBIS data. That's in Slide fifteen. You know, when you see something like a forty-two percent decrease in suspensions, I have questions about attribution. Like, what do you think we can attribute that to? Because whatever it is, it's working, right? So that, for me, is like a deeper, I'm not sure you can answer that, but I think if we're talking about these practices that have been in place versus practices that may be new, versus maybe like we're just coming out of the COVID fog, I don't know. But I just kind of want to know more there, right? Like, what can we probe, or how can we maybe think about what we can attribute that to?
Yeah, I think one big thing was, not that they haven't done it in the past, but really coming together and looking at data, and really identifying certain groups of students to work with social workers, really bringing in, like, you know, we keep talking about holistic, right? But we really want all hands on deck. What can we do to help our students before we get them to that suspension route? And so, yes, there's a lot there. We'd probably have to dig a little deeper as far as like, what can we attribute that to? I attribute that holistically to the PBIS coaches in each building. They do a phenomenal job. And our Tier Two, Tier Three coaches are our social workers.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like I've been to a number of PBIS meetings for this exact purpose, right? And I understand, you know, that. I just, I don't know, I just want to know if there's... What is the magic potion?
Magic powder?
The other thing that we can look to is that we do have more social workers now than we've ever had in the past, right? Like, through EBF, through the support that you all have given, we have, you know, in middle school, one at each grade level. We've partnered with outside organizations to provide in-house support. We have a variety of programs at middle school. And so I think it really is a comprehensive of everything, right? We have a tool that we adopted four years ago that allows us to look at data real-time. We can pull up the profile on a child on the spot. You are sitting at a meeting, you name the name of a child. We can sit there and look up the child. Grades, referrals, you name it, it's there. So I think it's all of these things that are comprehensively helping us get to where we need to be. And, you know, we're not where we want to be. We're where we're going. And so we really are hopeful for the future, because we are being very systematic and strategic about where we're leading our students.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. And I do really want to compliment and thank our teaching and learning team. They really leave no stone unturned. I can tell you, we've sat in so many really in-depth conversations when we're looking at data. And sometimes there's things to celebrate, and sometimes there's things that we say, we've got to do something. Something's not going right here. And they will just dive in and do everything they can to figure out solutions and strategies, and really then think about how, what we're talking about doing is going to impact our teachers, and really bringing our teachers into those conversations. So amazing group of people, and really thank you so much for sharing and kind of giving us a little glimpse into where we are now and the excitement of what's ahead for us. We are excited for the upcoming school year. The board then will continue, starting in September, to get those monthly presentations from each school. And our goal is that you will hopefully see the things that we have targeted as a district are then being replicated, and you're going to see those things in each school. And so really making sure that we are aligning across the district in these district and school improvement practices, and really diving into the data at the district level, the school level, and the classroom level. So we'll be looking forward to that in the new school year as well. All right. We did not have any FOIAs this month. You should be able to see in your dashboard the registration data. We're coming along. We are getting more and more kiddos registered, so we will be ready for the start of the school year. And I will turn it over to Jenny for the finance report.
Thanks, Mary. Our bank balance as of today is sixty-one million. Our revenue for the month of July is really low. It's only a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which is shocking when you look at our expenses monthly, which are around four million. Our cash flow short, which is up on above, and this is also in Board Book, our revenue for the month of June was four point one million, for an overall sixty-five point nine million. Our expenses for the month of June were six point six million, overall sixty-two point three million for the year. And our ending fund balance was sixty-two point four million. Our grant snapshot is next. Perfect. And we're starting to wind down all of our CARES grants. You'll start to see those falling off in the next couple of months. Grants are being expended. And then on the next one, perfect. Could you go to the bottom of the second page? Okay, so the middle column, column on the left is your descriptions. The middle column is your FY twenty-four, where we ended the year, and that's your... The middle column is your FY '24, where we ended the year, and that's your 62, 62.3 and your 65.9 for expenses and revenues. And then you see the tentative FY '25 draft. That's an early version of the draft budget. We started looking at it last month. Tonight on the board agenda, you have that to approve, which allows us to make payroll, keep the lights on. The final FY '25 budget will be approved at, or I'll bring it forward for you to approve in September. Then it's submitted in the state. This budget then gets, after tonight's approval on August 1st, will be on display at the district office for anyone to come and view. It's also, it will be on display for 30 days. And that is my whole report.
All right, thank you, Jenny. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. It was a really good presentation where we were able to see all the work that you've been doing, so we are appreciative of that. Finance?
Today, the finance committee met, and we looked at the 2024 final budget and then the 2025 tentative budget.
Thank you. Building and grounds?
Okay, thank you. We met today. We got an update about all of the summer projects, which are moving along. Comenski is finished pretty much, except for parking spaces. The new fence is up. Irving is a little bit not finished at this point because the UNIVents were late arriving, even though we ordered them very early. The elevator, sounds like that's done, so we're just kind of waiting to get the UNIVents installed. Heritage has an installation of a fence still to do, and Hiawatha is replacing clocks. We talked about what we're planning on doing in 2025, and that's the Emerson UNIVents, which I think is the only school left that still needs them.
Oh, Piper too, the fall of the summer.
Oh, and Piper.
Two more summers.
All right, then that's almost done. And then also, we talked about 3000 Ridgeland, and we got to see a very cool video about what the renderings might look like. So that's coming along. Hopefully, we're going to have everybody see that pretty soon because it's very cool. The parking lot is hopefully going to be done before the school year starts, so the teachers can park in it. So that was our building and grounds meeting.
Thank you. Policy?
We just had a number of policies that were rewritten but didn't have any significant changes. One of the things I did want to point out to the board was this issue about whether or not to keep two separate instances of public commentary in the regular board meeting and/or whether we should go down to one. And the recommendation would be if we chose to go down to just one, it should be before the consent agenda is voted on in case folks from the public want to have their say. But we won't be finalizing that until next meeting, so if you have any thoughts or strongly feel we should keep both, please let me know.
Thank you, and we don't have any legislative report. Correspondence?
We have one piece of correspondence.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining the board policy and can go to the podium. Please state your name.
22-year resident of Berwyn. Reason I'm here is the project next to Freedom. I didn't know about the other meetings, I just came back from a three-week vacation. I would have been in every meeting. This school board, Ms. Dr. Jarvis, Harvest, excuse me, dropped a ball on that property there. Before the 29s homes were approved to be built, that contractor was trying to make an alley into a street. The state wasn't having it, okay? They probably ran out of money. That property sat there for about a year or over a year, just sitting there dormant. I saw it to our community. There was a community meeting in the fourth ward, packed house, recorded. Only one person got up and said, oh, investment would probably not be a bad idea, and he was new to Berwyn. The whole building wanted green space there. You had a unique opportunity here to have green space there beside the parking lot. Green space built there like the community in the fourth ward wanted. And you dropped the ball again. You chose greed over the community and our kids' needs. Before I even go any further, I just want to address all the teachers here. My daughters went to Hiawatha on Freedom. I have the utmost respect for all of you. You go way beyond the call of duty, and my salute to all yous. I got a couple of family members that are teachers too, but my experience with all teachers that I experienced back and forth for my kids, I respect yous to the fullest. It's not about your teachers, it's about this board. You dropped the ball again. You chose greed. You had an opportunity to put green space there, and you chose to have a building structure put there. When I see my daughter going through the alley of Freedom, crossing east to go to the park to have recess, that's unacceptable. Unacceptable. For 12 to 15 years, I've been telling the aldermen from the fourth ward, eminent domain is property. Or it costs 2 million dollars, I said, so what? Our community, our kids, the teachers, our parents needed. And you dropped the ball again. I don't know if someone here has hit an agenda at the mayor's office or what's going on, but you made decisions based on greed, not the community's needs. And shame on this board. And I'm putting the blame on you, Dr. Harvest, mainly on you, because I feel you could have, you could have stopped this. You could have just listened to our community. There was a school, I mean, a community meeting recorded. 99% of people there wanted green space. You had a unique opportunity to, you know, put parking lot for the teachers and their parents and green space for our kids, and you failed this again. So if this committee, this school board ever needs money in a referendum, I'm here to tell you, I'll be the one opposing you. I'll go through my committee and let you, let them know that it's no. You paid 2.4 million, an elected official at City Hall told me that you could have got it for 800 or 850,000 the year before. Someone explain that one to me. I know that money came from surplus of COVID. I get that. But you could have paid 850 at most a year before, why wasn't it done? Why didn't you push to have eminent domain status before the builder bought that property? City Hall ignored us because the aldermen said, yeah, it was 50/50. It was 99% of the community said we want green space, and he sat up there and lied. 16% of people of Berwyn vote, 12% Latino. Shame on us. Because we, we have the power to change what's going on in Berwyn by voting. That's all we got to do is vote. We don't have to get mad, we don't have to do nothing, but step up to the plate and go out and vote. That would change tomorrow and change whatever, we don't like what's going on with Berwyn. Because there's a lot of things going on in Berwyn. But I'd love to see the FBI and the US Attorney check every detail of that property. And I'll go to the mayor's office and I'll say what I just said to them. I don't have no problem doing it, and I will. Just shame on this school board for dropping the ball again. We had a unique opportunity to put green space for our kids, and you failed this again.
Action items for the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda under request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board. No? Okay. Can we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll motion.
Palace, second?
I'll second.
I or nay?
Gonzalez?
W. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Palace?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Drenth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining the board policy 2 to 30. Okay, thank you. Board member comments?
I just wanted to bring up the public comment thing that Ms. Drenth, board member Drenth, brought up. I don't know if this is the proper place to say it, but I feel like the reason we had the two is if it ran over when we had a lot of people commenting. So maybe we could just only have it if we need it or something like that. I just didn't know when we would discuss that, so I was bringing it up.
Yeah, and I actually was the one who brought it up because like right now, like, we don't have people. So I was thinking maybe if eventually like we just have to start having more people or more comments, then we can change that. Or maybe there's a way that we can adjust it for special occasions.
I mean, I don't see the problem of keeping the second one for that express purpose, especially since if there's no one here, we can just move past it, you know?
Yeah, I think it was just for when we had like, a long time of people commenting.
And maybe we might be later, I don't know. Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, can we motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I'm like, nobody wants to leave?
At 8:04? I, Renee, Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. W. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Drenth?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.